This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Commissioner's Work Session of March 22nd. I think the first order of business is... Is that correct?
Under all items, you have the Grunderville. You want to do that last and open bids first?
Yeah, I know it's late. Yeah, that's going to be a lengthy discussion, right? So let's go ahead and open the bids now. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble pulling up the packet. I assume this is a CDBG?
Yeah.
Alright.
They have set aside $70,000 for this project.
Okay.
Did she say $70,000?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. First bid is from Penn West Specialized Contracting. The total bid for this is $118,811. Is that all the information you need, Pam?
Yes.
Okay. There's only one copy. Do you want to take the spec down? Okay, the next is Mealy Excavating and Construction. Their grand total is $132,767. Got it?
Yep.
By the way, for record, this is for North and East Street Waterline Extension in Columbus.
A lot of bids.
Yeah. Haven't seen this number in a while. Okay, so this one is E&amp;M Engineers and Surveyors. Grand total...
Excuse me, when did that bid come in?
No, that's not even... That's the addendum.
At 10:22 a.m.
That's Shiver's.
This is yours?
Yes.
Okay, so this is Shiver's?
That's just the...
Oh, I see. Yes, you're right. So it is... Yes, Shiver's Construction. Fairview, their grand total is $151,630.
Okay.
Busy morning. You've got a plan with a bunch of them all at once, huh? This one was a few minutes earlier. Okay, Polar Land Services. And Clayton Smith Enterprises. The last one. On here. Clayton Smith's grand total was $139,870. Now we'll turn them over to Planning and Zoning to go through them, find toothcomb, and make a recommendation at our Wednesday meeting. Or Dan, do you think we'll have it by the Wednesday meeting?
I'm not sure.
So which is one you... That's where you budgeted 70 and the projects are much higher. You modify the product, project scope?
Well, I think we're gonna have to do a budget modification and take...
Yeah, CDBG.
Other CDBG funds.
Yeah, usually there's, there's, there's always other CDBG funds to use.
Okay.
Okay.
Potentially.
We're explaining to look through these tomorrow morning.
Okay.
We're being raised for Wednesday. What's the deadline if we want on the agenda?
Well, let's go ahead and do this. We'll put it on the agenda and if you're not ready to make a recommendation, then we'll just table it.
Yep.
Okay, now going back to old items of discussion, last week we were going to talk about Grunderville, or two weeks ago I guess already. But weren't able to do it at that time, so we're gonna assume look at a presentation.
No, I don't really... I don't have a... I haven't had time.
Oh, okay.
I sent you guys the report. Accumulation, obviously. I've sent you draft reports, so... And then, basically this is an update. I don't know, I don't know that there's anything at this time for us to technically vote on per se, but I, like I wanted to give you an update and then just have a general discussion about what your thoughts were on some of the stuff that I was initially pitching, mostly to just get a high level view of, is it even, is it even within the realm of possibility? Because I don't want to spend a bunch of time on it if there's, if there's no interest in it, okay? So Tetra Tech submitted the final closure report. Josh, I sent you, I just sent you the report five minutes ago. So the final closure report, I'm sorry that I didn't send it to you guys earlier. I've just been out of commission for a little while, so... The report was submitted on March 12th. That report has been reviewed, or the draft report, which I did send you, which isn't dramatically different than what the final report was, was reviewed by DEP. And generally, they approved it. And then we had a status meeting with them, and I can't remember, you were on that meeting, was it? Yeah. So to basically talk with the ANF, the DEP, and the county about the next steps in order to get like a final closure certification on the landfill. And Dan, if I mess anything up, just interject, please. So the report itself is the culmination of two years' worth of work, two plus years. It started in August 2018. The report's extensive. It involves testing of multiple well sites, testing methane that, from the, from the landfill itself, and over the course of multiple seasons, so that the change in temperature is how that would affect the results. The, the report states that there are no significant concerns and that all of the elements within the site are within the realm of current environmental standards. So this, from Tetra Tech, the environmental consultant's perspective, the site is ready for closure. DEP agrees with that. And so that's why the final report was submitted. They're basically going to issue, from our understanding, a letter or some type of official statement of closure. Now, again, this has been sort of an evolving process where we pitch some things, do some things, and then there's some more discussion. So the, the last meeting was no exception. So there are some very clear things that need to be ironed out. So the first thing is, the site will be closed and not need to be monitored anymore by the closure. Okay, so it will, it won't be in a state of post-closure. It will be closed. However... What?
At what point does that take effect?
When they issue the closure certification.
Be any day or...
Which should be sometime within the next month.
Your...
Okay.
So, so basically, they have to get the final language put together with their legal team, and then that's when they're gonna send it to us. Now, the closure, the, the couple of issues though are, for some indeterminate amount of time, the site will need to be mowed on a biannual basis. So every other year, the cap, and I'll give you this map.
Now, the, is the cap insulated here?
Yes. So, so I'm sorry, I should have done two different times. So on the far...
Okay.
So on the far right of the... Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have highlighted that too. You can kind of read it if you have very good reading vision, but right here on the right, there's a little cylindrical shape. That's the cell, which is... Dan, how, how big is it? Like two acres?
I thought, oh...
A little more than that.
Yeah.
It's a few acre, or maybe it's six. I can't...
Well, 15, 15.91 acres for the two cells combined.
Okay, 15, sorry.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm... Okay, so...
Got it.
Apparently...
They're both full?
They're capped, yeah.
So, so, and then, so A, the, the, and this is to prevent trees from growing on the cap and, and breaking it, thereby kind of ruining the seal on the material that's underneath it. And then there'll need to be monuments placed, basically outlining the cell, so that for future reference, anybody that comes through that needs to know where that is, that those are there. And then the site just simply needs to be kind of monitored, and no major construction needs to be done essentially on the cell space in order to prevent any kind of damage to it. So those, originally when we had talked about it, we were under the impression that that was going to be specifically put into the deed, as, as covenants on the deed. In a conversation with DEP, they kind of made the position that it was strongly recommended, but that it wasn't necessarily mandated. So basically, we have to continue to have a conversation with them about what that means and exactly what we're gonna do. Right now, the way that we're looking at it currently is that we're going to go forward with the, with the, putting it into the deed, like figuring out how to put, put the covenants into the deed. The, the environmental consultant put a draft deed covenant document together. Basically, my intention is, is to work with solicitor, the solicitor, in order to finalize that and then work with the ANF to put it onto the, the property so that it's in place. Now, the questions that we have to answer are, how exactly is that going to be carried out going forward? Because the property is owned by the ANF. The Solid Waste Authority has a special use permit for it. The Solid Waste Authority is going to disappear this year, at the end of the year. And so essentially, we have to come up with a plan in order to address the maintenance on the property going forward, which we have to do regardless of whether, you know, whether the Solid Waste Authority stayed or went. Currently, the way this is managed is, they, there's a closure fund. The closure fund is somewhere between the neighborhood of $600,000 and $700,000. And all of the costs come out of it in order to take care of the maintenance of the site, which is the mowing essentially, and a, and a few other things. So I guess another piece of this is, in order to shut the site down, we have to basically cap the wells and, and then kind of remove some of that material that's still there, like the tank and a few other things. We, we have a feeling that that can be taken for scrap or, or reutilized, so we'd end up putting that on, you know, putting that up for a bid or have somebody come and just take it away. All of that's going to be done with the closure fund. So all the money associated with this is gonna be paid for through the closure fund. There shouldn't be any county money tied up in it. And I would say including the legal fees, we'll end up, I, I, we'll end up talking to Schmidt, and then he would bill the Solid Waste Authority for his legal work on the, the project. Ream Johnson was previously the, the legal representative of the Solid Waste Authority, so I'm assuming now Attorney Schmidt would be, would be able to do the legal work for them. And I don't think that they have a strong preference either way. They just want to see the thing done. So the, the idea at this point is, is the, the closure fund would be used to do all of that, and then what, once that's done, whatever is left over is what is left over. And then that has to be put in some kind of a framework that would then care for the site going forward. Now, the issue, originally when I started working on this, the idea was to close the site down and take that chunk of money and then use it for a recycling program or for something else. And through, by opening Pandora's box, now there's a bunch of different stuff that needs to be done with the site, which would have had to been done anyway. And frankly, I'm glad that we were proactive in looking into this. But what's kind of happened is, is the, the, the market for recycling's changed. The situation within the county's changed, and then the amount of money, like, and then you add in the state kind of rating, all of the environmental funds, and then there's no real grant opportunities through the state currently. All of that has kind of put the pabosh to this larger recycling initiative. So my recommendation, or what I, the, the thing that I'm pitching, and I wrote this in the email to everybody in order to kind of put this on the table, at least initially as a concept, is to basically take the closure fund, whatever's left over after all of the kind of maintenance and one-time costs are taken care of and completely shutting the site down, and putting it into an endowment fund that would then pay money to either the RDA or the county in order to maintain the site. And then whatever money's left over would be utilized either for, partially for the, the recycling program that we currently have, which is paid for through this fund, or redevelopment, you know, like whatever's left over would be utilized for redevelopment through like the RDA. So the, the county, it, we, I, this would be lumped in from, in my perspective, and with the other endowment funds that we have currently. It seemed like the only way to get the money to pay long-term. I feel like we'll be, we'll have some, you know, $500,000 left over, maybe more when this is done. If we put that in an endowment, it should produce between 15,000 and 25,000, you know, depending upon how it's set up. And that would pay for, you know, the mowing and everything else, and then it would also pay for the recycling program. So, and just to be, so to, just to go back to like the current recycling setup, there are still five sites that are operated. Columbus, Eldred, Elk, Cherry Grove. I know, there's one more.
You're looking for four there.
I know, I, I know there's one more.
We lost Sheffield, Wade, Pleasant.
Maybe there's four, and I'm, I'm drawing a blank on, on the, anyway. So the, to maintain the four or five sites that we have currently, it's in the neighborhood of, of $10,000 to $15,000. So depending upon how much the site produces, that would cover that, and there'd be some left over. And my thoughts were to, again, have this, have that money potentially go to like the RDA, and then they can use that as a potential revenue source, you know, to operate. The, the, the site maintenance isn't going to cost much at all. Like if we're mowing every other year, the, you know, or the RDA, or whoever's in charge of this mow every year, currently we pay about $1,000 to $1,500 to get it mowed every year. So that's, you know, 700 bucks.
About the only expense there will be, because once the wells are plugged and they're done with, once the tank is removed and we're, that's, that piece of it's gone, it's just mowing the, the top of the liner.
One of the other things that I've, that we, I've never talked about in detail is, the site currently has its own liability insurance, so this wouldn't be under the county's liability, and we'd just maintain the same policy and it would be paid out of that, that money as well. So...
Does the policy premium on that, do you know what it is?
I, I don't know off the top of my head. I just know that the Solid Waste Authority has maintained it and it gets a can of, I want to say it's $150. Not that much.
Really?
Yeah.
What's it cover?
Just the normal accidental, like, you know...
Oh, okay. It's not environmental.
No.
General liability. Okay, I see. So there isn't any environmental liability on this?
Not that I'm aware of.
It's just what would cover you should something terrible happen? Which is a lot more expensive usually.
I should say that up till now, this pot of money has been the insurance policy.
Yeah, well, that was my assumption. My assumption was the $600,000 was an estimate on if the site needed to be totally cleansed.
Correct.
What would that cost?
Well, honestly, all it is, is the, the totality of all of the assets of the organization when it closed. So the, the fund was originally like a million dollars. And then after spending money in order to like, you know, clean up, take stuff away and do different things, that's where they're at. They used to have staff that they still paid and some other things, so that's why I've done...
Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner, I think there was also a bond on the, that was required by the DEP as well.
That was another piece, was that we would take, the, the, there'd be like $10,000 to $15,000 would be taken out of the closure fund to create a bond for the site as well. Now, technically speaking, that's just the, the cost of expenses, I think, but depending upon how we set it up, you know. But anyway, yeah, that's, that's, that's part of the closure.
So I guess the carrot in this particular situation is the $600,000. And the question is, are we willing to take on oversight and the liability associated with it to gain some interest from a $600,000-ish endowment?
Well, technically speaking, we, we take care of it.
Right.
We're continuing in some level to do what, what's been done already. The, the... You know, the only alternative hypothetically would be to abandon the situation, which would create other, I think, worse problems.
Or reactivate the board. I mean, Solid Waste Authority ends at the end of the year unless we re-up it for another 50 years or whatever.
Well, and, and I guess...
No one wants to do that.
Yeah, this, this is why I was kind of pitching the idea of this being like an RDA project, because they're, they're a limited group. They, but they're in a position where they could, you know, I mean, because technically speaking, Dan managed, and Dan and Pam managed this. I mean, to some extent, I mean, our, that's, that's what's happened and that's what's been happening for a couple of decades. So, you know, to some degree, we, that would be maintained, but...
The, the reason that the cells need to be mowed is so that free roots don't establish themselves and pierce the liner.
Sure.
And that's a DDP requirement there. The Forest Service is in the business of growing trees, so...
Yep.
Complicates things a little.
Oh, I understand it very well. Who, who owns this property now? The Grunderville property?
Yeah.
The ANF does, okay.
Yeah, so that, that's a separate, I felt like the whole ownership of the property is almost a separate discussion, just because we can achieve the closure with or without the transfer of the property.
I see.
We're still, so we don't, we're not gonna own the property. I guess my, my, kind of my view is, is that the ANF, like, like hypothetically, let's say we, we say to them, "We never want to own this. We never want to own the property." They're still gonna want us to be, to do, to do something in order to maintain, like, you know, because that's the, you know...
Who's maintaining it now?
We are.
We're maintaining it now, okay.
That's where the covenant comes in.
Yeah. Like the, the, I don't, I, I, I have a sneaking suspicion that the Forest Service's legal team would have an issue with the site not being, not being maintained by somebody related to the county. So initially, like I said, when we did this, the carrot was a lot bigger.
Yeah.
And what, what this has turned into is a project that needed to be done, not necessarily... I mean, from my perspective, at the very least, we, we would be able to generate a revenue source in perpetuity with an endowment utilizing of money that's just essentially being drained in order to maintain the site anyway. So, you know, so that's, that's a positive. And, and, and the other thing is, is that if we hadn't looked into this, we'd be walking into this year and somebody would finally realize that, that the Solid Waste Authority is gonna disappear, that the permit was at an end, and somebody needed to do something about the site, and nobody had done anything. And so...
So this currently is falling under the purview of the Solid Waste Authority, the maintenance of this particular property?
Yes.
Which is...
Yeah, so the, so previously, the Solid Waste Authority, the last employee they had was like an administrative secretary, and she was in charge of the building and everything. At some point in the early 2000s, they, that person stopped working for them and everything transferred to Pam. And so Pam has the checkbook. She writes the checks. She handles all of the financial stuff. So to some degree, this isn't, this, this arrangement doesn't dramatically change anything except that this, you know, the site doesn't have to be monitored. Like, like previously, there had to be testing on the well. There was...
Yep.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for driving this. I'm sorry that it's not gonna have the carrot that we anticipated, but it's one of those things that have to be done.
Well, it is. And I know, I know that Bob, I, I know that everybody involved in this has been very positive from a couple of different standpoints. One is, is everybody's wanted to get this thing done for decades. So the fact that it's going to be done and there's some closure, although not completely closed.
Legally closed. Let's not confuse it.
Closure, closure, now we're in, you know, kind of... Close, closure. Now we're in, you know, kind of caretaker or, you know, I don't know. I mean, so close, closure. But I know that Bob's excited. I know the folks at the DEP are very happy because they've had to kind of casually monitor the site for years. I know the folks at the A and F want to get this thing done because they, they obviously don't want to deal with having, you know, a, a, a monitored landfill property. So, you know, I mean, the, I'm hoping that we, I mean, I'm going to continue to pursue trying to get the entirety of the property transferred, you know, including the Girl Scout camp.
I think, yeah.
We have other avenues for that, that we're, that we're mining.
Or service.
It's just going to take some time. So, so just, so I guess my, my, the, the question that I'm trying to ask is, does any of, does anybody have a major problem with any of this, like at this point? Because if, if we're going to do something different, we really need to make that determination.
I really don't see the alternative.
Well, I guess that's kind of the point that.
I don't see a good alternative, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, well, my point is, is that there are alternatives, but all of them would involve rolling the dice on what would, you know, potentially be a legal issue.
Well, I guess my, it sounds like we're, although we're not accepting the liability, we're maintaining it today and it sounds like we'll be required to continue to do that. So the real question is, are we willing to accept whatever the liability is left there as a, and receive the six hundred thousand dollars? You know, to open an endowment or, or whatever we choose to do with it. So my only other question is, it doesn't sound like the A and F is going to give up the property itself. So how do we envision a greenway or beautification project? I mean, we can't do anything on the cell.
Can't put anything permanent structures on there and, you know, dig any kind of footers or anything.
Right? Which makes sense, totally.
So, so the, the, the A and F still wants to give us the property.
Oh, they do, okay.
So.
I see.
And, and that's why I highlighted the yellow line because that's the yellow line essentially part of the sixty acres. Now, now the thing is, is obviously we've had conversations about this. It's the preference that we would, that we, that the, the Girl Scout camp is the more attractive region of it. Um, so that's kind of the goal right now that we're going to continue working on. That said, the, you know, to me, the easiest thing to do is to transfer this to the RDA and then utilize this either through.
When you say this, what do you mean?
The, the highlighted region, the, the, the.
All of the, all of the property?
The, all of the yellow line.
A hundred and forty acres.
Well, the, 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 when they say a hundred and forty acres, that includes the section in the lower left-hand corner.
Okay, okay.
Which is, is not on the table.
Got it.
And I think it's because there are multiple oil leases on there, the, 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 I'm assuming that there's, that somebody's drawing revenue from.
Well, then we, we watch that.
That, that would be, you know, but, so, so the, the, hi- hypothetically, this would be either used for recreational purpose or some type of, you know, greenway or environmental project. You know, hypothetically, Dan and I talked about, you know, u- using a. This, this is why it was incorporated into the recreational, like as an amendment to the recreational plan to research the space and then come up with.
Potential uses.
Some potential uses, you know. It's an open space. The trees can't be grown on at least where the cell is hypothetically. You know, you could put a solar array on it, like you could do something or something along those lines as long as it's just on the surface of the space. Like, so I'm not saying that that's what it would do, but I'm just saying like there, it, it's not that it can't be utilized for anything. You just can't build a building on it. So, you know.
Well.
So like, like hypothetically, especially with, on the cell.
Okay.
Um, so hypothetically, even if you, I mean, this could be a gathering space. Like the, hypothetically, like for recreation, you could, you know, because that space is open, there, there are things that we could do to figure out how to put some type of, like, you know, e- open space theater or you could have, you know, some kind of event there that would be large. It's, it's, it's away from the, um, it's away from, from buildings and communities. So like if it was loud or there was something, you know, I, I'm just throwing stuff out there. Like, my point is, is that you, there are things that you could do that would be recreationally oriented that you might not be able to do in.
Athletic fields too.
Soon you'll be out there with your band.
This is, that's my, this is all an elaborate plot. But anyway, I, 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 all of that stuff, I, we haven't spent a lot of time focusing on that because obviously the goal is to just get the, but I think that there, 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 there's potential for that. And again, like my view is, is if it was transferred to the RDA, which is, you know, an arms length from us, you know, and from the county, they would just continue to do what they're going to do anyway. And, you know, I mean, I, my, again, my view has always been that, you know, if, if the Fed's willing to give us land back, even if it has a, you know, a dormant landfill waste cell on it. I, 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 I always like getting federal land back, so, I don't know.
Well, okay, so the, the phase one I'm supportive of in terms of, it sounds like the best course of action is get the thing closed and then set up the endowment fund or trust or whatever you're going to call it. I mean, that's, that's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Bottom of that. And then the second step or second phase being, you know, property utilization in the future, RDA, whatever, I think that's a separate conversation.
Yep. Well, and, and just to be clear, I don't expect you guys to just, you know, rubber stamp like just a playground for jazz, you know, to, you know, like, like so.
Well, the RDA has to do that, not.
I, I agree that we should have some type of plan for the utilization of property if we're going to initiate a transfer of blood. So I don't, I don't think it's fair for me or anybody to come here and say, you guys should just go along with it just because we, you know, we like the space. So my hope is with the, with the, between the comprehensive plan, the recreational plan and, you know, and then kind of researching the site itself and continuing that we can come up with some utilization plan and then bring it to the board and that would be the time when we actually have a discussion about transfer.
We'll call it Eagle Stock.
Well, the only thing I think about is when you, you have property.
Eagle Palooza. Anyway, sorry.
Nothing, I don't know. I was just thinking about when we went out there and we, we did a, you know, a tour. There's somebody mentioned that there were places where there were products being grown that weren't legal to grow, trying to be censorship to newspaper.
Some people run.
Um, and the question is, does that now become our problem if we own, now own? So who's going to monitor that? That was my only thought. Is it related to any type of, type of property that gets donated or seized?
The sheriff's department is already.
They're doing it already?
Monitoring, yeah. Not, not because of that. They, they do the entire, right? Or, not the entire A and F. Warren County portions of the A and F. That wouldn't really change.
Well, and, and I've thought about this too, like down the line, because Dan and I talked briefly. I mean, one of the issues is, is this is right next to the, right next to the distribution center. And the future of that will play into this as well because God knows what, what that's going to be used for. So hypothetically, like if we have this property next to it and there was some type of way to take that useful. Okay, well, that, that's good. That provided some clarity. I appreciate you guys being willing to continue to look at this long-term motion headache that Dan and I have generated.
Headache for a long time.
Well, Dan, Dan's been dealing with it far longer than I have. The, although the call certainly, there are things that we would like to have done differently. Everybody was super pumped about the idea of this kind of reaching some type of closure. I know the Solid Waste Authority who only needs annually, you know, they're, they're tired of serving and they kind of want to transition away from this.
I think the DEP is satisfied with the test results that we provided them.
Yeah.
There's nothing serious happening out there as far as.
Yep.
Anything like that.
Okay. Is that it for Grunderville? Moving on, uh, policy and procedure, I'll update that in the commissioner's meeting review. Projects, oh, hang on, Dan. Any project updates? You're on the agenda for something. No, no project updates, then the commissioner's packet. So on the agenda for Wednesday, we have agreement with Mac and Engineering for the comprehensive plan. That was all.
Super, super excited about that. We should, I guess we should just talk briefly about that, right?
Well, I'd like, I guess what I'd like to ask would be some, can you first of all come on Wednesday?
Yes, I have a plan to be there.
And please give a.
An overview of.
Yeah, I, I, I think this is very important and I'd like to give it a little more time and just, and prompt a discussion or a, you know, quick vote. I think it's really worthy of updating the community on what this is.
This is something long overdue.
Totally.
Okay, so we'll plan on having you and, and.
You're upstairs, Jackson, Portland?
Yeah, well.
Yes, from Jackson, Portland. In fact, if you wanted to do a PowerPoint or something like that, feel free to send it and we'll.
But I was thinking maybe just a couple pages, either.
Or a shower, or a page, yeah, whatever, something like that would be great. Okay.
Because I think that it would be helpful for the community as well.
Next would be essentially an addendum proposed from Country Manager Management. Next would be the annual EAP program renewal. And I also have a resolution that Pam and I are working on to adopt the government management system plan that we've met about previously. And there's a binder in Pam's office where it's been emailed to you if you want to come through it again. So again, that would be the document that essentially sets up the need for a management system, how things are numbered, how often they, how often policies and procedures are reviewed, how they're approved, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that's ready to go. And then with that would be the first eight procedures such as how to write a procedure, how to revise a procedure, et cetera, et cetera. So all of that, I believe, is ready to vote on Wednesday unless there's objection. Okay? And I think that's it that I have on the agenda. Oh, now we can do the bid. Sorry, the, this bid potentially for the CDBG program. If that doesn't happen by Wednesday, it's fine. We'll just defer it two weeks. But if it does, great, we'll get it on the agenda. Anything else that needs to go on the agenda or any questions, clarifications? All right. The department, oh, besides Dan. Sorry, Dan. Any department update?
I'm glued right now.
Commissioner's schedule, anything to note?
We're just moving forward on broadband task force. We have a meeting with Tom Lott from Youngsville TV and, and Municipal Capital to talk about broadband and next steps. We're not quite ready to bring it to the IDA. We really, a smaller group of us just want to hear what the proposal is and try to, I guess, you know, get our hands around it and understand what the commitment would be.
Do we have a work session next week?
No. We have an executive session with the solicitor.
We should, we should probably add to the work session at some point a discussion about the stimulus, right? Like just talking about that.
Me.
Once the, so the guy, the guidance from the Treasury is expected in a week?
Yeah.
At that point, it'll be a good time to start discussing. I mean, at this point, I would just keep a log of things, ideas, requests that you have for how to spend it. I have that on my whiteboard if you want to add to it, you know, broadband is the obvious, right?
I mean, that could gobble up the whole thing.
It certainly could, yeah.
And, and the other thing is, I know that, you know, municipalities and townships are also going to be getting their own allocation. The question is, to what degree could they also support the initiative with some funding? So, you know, I think that would really then require a collaborative effort. And, you know, Youngsville TV's been, been the big planner of all of this, which I think is phenomenal. Uh, we just want to make sure we're all going to head in the right direction. It relates to those funds.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think, I think, you know, if you have the money, you can do.
You think you can't do.
Well, I mean, but the, I think the bigger challenge.
I have enough.
I think it, yeah, A, if we had the money, that, that would be great. But B, I mean, that is a, I, I don't know in what timeframe, so here we go back to the timeframe to spend those dollars.
They, they have it until 2024, right? I mean, with the window.
Remember that.
It's, it's multiple years, like, because they're, they're anticipating it to also be utilized for like, if there's another wave, you know. So there, there is a wide window for it and, and the restrictions, at least from what I can see, are pretty loose.
Right. Well, it's what was written in the bill, but then.
That's good. Refreshing compared to carriers, which, you know, they did the hurry up and spend the money. Oh, wait, never mind. Now you have another year once you've already spent the money. That was cute.
I mean, I think the bigger challenge in any event, whether it's funded or not, is, you know, having the manpower to put something in, to play in that, you know, timeframe.
Right.
And I know that we're, I believe there's some challenges already as far as timing, so.
Okay, well, yes, that will be added, that'll be a discussion point when we get more information. Uh, schedule-wise, I'm out Friday. I'm just taking a vacation day. And there's no cause for executive session today. If there's nothing more. And adjourned.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Dan.